Good afternoon. Welcome to City Council Meeting for June 28, 2022. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed. A related discussion may be delayed at any time, and we may have music playing during the introduction. I'll call the meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, can we have a confirmation of the agenda posting and the roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The agenda was posted in accordance with open-meeting law, and all members are present.
Thank you. We will begin with the invocation by Minister Andre Haynes. Please rise.
Please bow. Dear Lord, thank you for life. Thank you for the opportunity and privilege to live in the best state and the best country on the face of the earth. Thank you for leaders. Thank you for citizens. Thank you for the efforts of everyone to contribute and to make the lives better of ourselves, our children, our grandchildren, our friends, and our neighbors. We ask that you give knowledge, wisdom, patience, peace, and comfort tonight during this meeting, guide the thoughts of those making decisions, and let grace and love abound. Amen.
Thank you, Minister Haynes. We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Minister Haynes, thank you for your kind words. Madam City Clerk, no public announcements this evening?
None written on the sheet.
Thank you. We'll open our first public comment period. The initial public comment period is for those items listed on the agenda for action. Members of the public will have up to five minutes to speak on those items. Anyone may have sent in an email with their comments prior to the meeting as stated in the agenda, and we will also accept phone calls after we listen for anyone here in chambers. Is there anyone in chambers that would like to speak in public comment? All right, we will go to the phone lines. Anyone wishing to call in? This is the initial public comment period for the City Council Meeting. Anyone wishing to call? Madam City Clerk, did we have any emails for public comment?
Yes, there's one comment.
Please go ahead.
This comment was submitted by Brock Davis. I support the idea of a lush, shady-green visual entrance on Veterans Drive into Boulder City. I support a high-end, lushly landscaped RV resort and high-end, lushly landscaped accompanying shopping center, with the key being clean, green, and lush. To that end, I would propose that Boulder City's treated affluent from down the hill be piped up and sold at treated affluent market rates for all of their nonpotable and lush landscaping purposes. A high-end RV resort would attract a quality population of snowbirds, travelers, and visitors that would enhance Boulder City's economy and provide a productive use for all of Boulder City's treated affluent. I picture it similar to the Lakeside RV Resort in Perrump in its prime. I definitely do not support it as an unshaded, gravelled, hot, underwatered, scraggly, desert-lanscaped RV park and shopping center. If that sadly common look is the vision for the RV park and shopping center, then I don't support it. Please review stock photos of Perrump's Lakeside RV Resort in its prime without the lake. On an aside, I would also suggest that our present desert landscape medians and walkways on Veterans Drive and Adams Boulevard have their irrigation repaired, increased substantially, and properly set so the landscaping can thrive and grow instead of barely surviving for the embarrassing look we have now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one last opportunity. Anyone present in chambers who would like to speak during public comment? All right, hearing no one, we will close the public comment period. Move to approval of the regular agenda. Madam City Clerk, any changes?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. I would like to request removal of items five and nine from the regular agenda this
Thank you. And council members, any changes or comments?
No changes.
No changes.
I'll move then for approval of the regular agenda with the removal of items five and nine.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, approval of the consent agenda. Again, Madam City Clerk, any changes?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
All right, council, any changes for the consent agenda?
No changes.
Yes.
Anyone wishing to make a motion?
I'll move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that brings us to our first item then of the regular agenda. Item number four, Dr. Jaskowski with Clark County School District.
Hi, good evening. Mayor McManus, members of the council, Deanna Jaskowski proudly serve as the region superintendent that supports our schools out here in Boulder City. I have an update on three items today: a facility update, update regarding the reorganization under NRS 3DAG, and then school highlights at the end. So first, with the facility update, instead of the option to build a K-8 school in Boulder City, Andrew Mitchell Elementary School, Martha P. King Elementary School, and Garrett Junior High School will be regularly assessed and modernized as needed. I figured as much.
That's welcome news, even if we don't seem overdue.
No, I see the heads nodding. Thank you for that. And then I have an update regarding the reorganization under NRS 3DAG. As you know, the district is working with the State Department of Education on final pieces of compliance with NRS 3DAG and the accompanying regulations in the NAC: allocation of 85% of unrestricted funds to schools, and the authority for principals to hire staff at their school. On July 7, Nevada's State Board of Education is holding a public hearing for four related regulations, some of which the district has publicly asserted are outside the authority of the State Board of Education, and none of these yet are adopted. They included draft regulations on training requirements, clarification of terms related to principals hiring of staff, dispute resolution processes, and consequences for noncompliance. Upon a request from the State Board, the district will be presenting during their July 7 meeting information related to the allocation of unrestricted funds to school and carryforward funds by schools from one year to the next. And then lastly, update from our four incredible schools and our four remarkable leaders, as you know. Mr. Day at Andrew Mitchell Elementary School, they were able to hold their annual kindergarten promotion for the first time since 2019 in the Boulder City High School Theater. They received new carpet prior to summer acceleration, and summer acceleration was really differentiated to truly meet the individual needs of the students, to promote really the social and emotional well-being, including they went to Boulder Bowl, Boulder City Library, and the Boulder City Pool, so they're very thankful for the use of the facilities and the partnership there. Mr. Schrock at Martha P. King, they provided intervention and acceleration for approximately 96 students. They added a new STEM program to their summer acceleration for their indoor astronomy, if you've ever seen the indoor Star Lab, which is really quite remarkable, so they used that through their summer acceleration. And again, wanting to thank the Boulder City Swimming Pool to opportunity to swim for free. They added three new teachers. They want to hope to reduce their class sizes, and a second math program to reduce class sizes, and to really increase student growth and achievement in a content area that historically, that the school and school district as well have been struggling in, so they're excited about that. They will also be adding their intermediate autism program for next school year for 2023, and this will allow students with autism to remain here in Boulder City. And the new autism teacher is a Boulder City resident and excited to be a part of the program. They're also continually working to open up their STEM lab, and the community raised $13,000 for that, and they're very thankful to the Boulder Dam Credit Union for that long tradition of financial literacy education with the return of its Mula-Mula program to King Elementary School. For Ms. Timont at Garrett Junior High School, they started a few new traditions there, which is wonderful, so the students left, the eighth-grade students left the final assembly with the sixth and seventh-grade students cheering them on, leaving and running through the tunnel, leaving as bobcats, and of course, becoming eagles. And then our STEM classes also completed their projects where they built electric guitars. During summer acceleration, they had over 70 students that were enrolled that were there for credit retrieval, but they started their day with the physical activity kickball, badminton, peaceball, and other activities. I mean, all the teachers, of course, participated in that, which was fun as well. They had ELA in math, they wrote their own mysteries, fundamental math skills, where they built tiny houses and dissected owl pellets that we all remember from way back when you never forget that science activity either, and that they'd like to thank the Boulder City Pool as well for allowing the students to swim twice during summer acceleration. It was really a wonderful way to end that. And Garrett is really excited about receiving the STEM designation, excuse me, they're participating in the STEM Leaders Academy for the purpose of becoming a Governor STEM-designated school, and they are implementing their $25,000 STEM grant at the school for their sixth and seventh-grade students: coding, robotics, global science, and STEM explorations. And they'll be adding guitar, so you might be hearing guitar throughout the city. And at Boulder City High School, they had 119 students graduate on the 26th with over $3 million in scholarships, and these students were accepted into over 26 different colleges, universities, and schools. And of course, we're so excited to see what they will do and then bring back here to Boulder City. And they had 140 students that were enrolled in the summer acceleration program. They were also able to offer credit retrieval in summer acceleration, and an exciting piece, they were able to, an additional senior was able to complete all of his credits and will participate in the summer graduation. Thank you again for the opportunity to share the school highlights and a couple other updates.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Jorgensen?
First off, thank you so much. It's nice to be able to have an update quarterly from you, and we appreciate it. I taught school, my parents taught school, I attended school, and Clark County and my kids all attended school here, so I have a soft spot in my heart for this. I love to hear what you're saying about summer acceleration program. This is great. I love to hear that the kids are back out doing things, and that they're doing hands-on things, and things that get them excited about education. But probably the most exciting news that you shared tonight is the fact that we will keep our schools intact, and thank you very much on behalf of Boulder City. That is part of what makes us unique, and that's part of what is at the heart of our community, as you can tell in that square block there, and it means a lot to us. Because our kids go a lot of times from kindergarten to 12th grade, we do have little, I mean, I saw this year all the high school seniors walking down, cap and gown, to the elementary schools as they came out and clapped for them, and I just think it's unique, and it's a beautiful thing to have that in this community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you very much for the update. It is very much appreciated. With regards to the summer acceleration program, do we know how many of the students utilize that, especially, you know, how many students we may have hoped to see utilizing that versus how many students actually didn't?
I can provide you that information.
And then, as far as, you know, we've all seen the difficulty that so many students had, you know, over the distance learning, and many of them really struggling to keep up, but something, you know, that I've been made aware of from a small number of people, but, you know, nevertheless, it is, has had an impact, is that there are some of those children who did actually accelerate with the distance learning, right? They found themselves, they maybe struggled in school, and finally having this different opportunity for a learning experience provided them something that they had that they never had before. What is the, does the school district have any plans for how to continue, if there is any plan to continue distance learning for those students which actually accelerate with that versus, you know, your in-person learning? I know that there were options available early on, but I'm not sure what the plans are for the future.
Yeah, thank you for the question. And yes, I agree that we have seen students that, in a different learning model, have an opportunity to grow and accelerate their learning. We have Nevada Learning Academy, which has expanded exponentially throughout the pandemic, and we are continuing that work with Nevada Learning Academy, and you're still able to enroll to participate in, if distance learning was the best option for you, that we still have that opportunity in the school district. We had prior to the pandemic, had been there, but again, because of how we needed to pivot and really provide opportunities for our students and our families, and we've grown that and intend to continue to provide that opportunity.
And I think many would not have even thought that that was, not only was it even an option, but that also that it might have not been an appropriate option, but after seeing the results, you know. Other than that, yeah, I'm glad to hear about us keeping our schools here, but I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, I wanted to thank you for the report, and I'm also very glad to hear that the three schools will stay intact. And I had the good fortune, or maybe crazy idea, of going to the senior grad night down at the Adventure Dome, and I have to say it's a testimony to the education system here. Great students, I mean, just really nice, you know, and to have the adults, well, I mean, they're really adults, but to have the, those of us who were supervising, who really didn't have a lot to do, and I thought, this is fantastic, and I think this just shows what happens in an environment like this, where people care about their education. So, thank you, the education system here, and I have a question, I know it sounds odd, but there's a lot of, it seems like there's a lot of interest in the STEM programs and the science and all of that. How about the arts? Are there pathways that students are taking to not necessarily go that direction?
Yeah, good question, and with some of the updates as well, so there's the STEM, and then there's also the STEAM, and the STEAM is the A for the arts as well. And there was, and I'm going back to my notes where they were also, what's that about the guitars, that they were, what's in here?
Is that with the?
The answer is yes, that they had the opportunity. So we know that, working with Nevada Blueprint 2.0, and I believe 3.0 has been released as well, in terms of the pathways for our students and job opportunities, you know, through the STEM fields, but as well as the enrichment component, because we know how important fine arts, you know, the arts are, our music programs, and we have remarkable music and art programs here as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. You know, again, I'll pass along my well wishes on keeping the schools intact. You know, I don't know that people here are unwilling to look at different possibilities, but that was something that came upon the community, I think, in a very surprising way. And clearly, the administrators and staff at the schools have worked very hard to create identities for each one of those schools, and I think that really helps the students a great deal, especially the younger children. So, again, if something like that were to be considered, I think having input from the community about how to do things rather than being, getting an announcement that, well, your world's going to change, that usually is a little too jarring for people. I did hear on the news recently that Congress, in their wisdom, has apparently renewed the summer food program. Again, I know that is something that's kind of out of the district's control without that funding, but, you know, especially during the pandemic, we saw how important that was to keep that connection with the schools and make sure that children receive that nutrition. So again, I hope that that program can be implemented here in Boulder City. I heard a lot of compliments on how the staff handled that, getting that out to the community. With the American Rescue Plan money, I know the city and the school district are in the phase of planning for these things. I believe the school district has received about three-quarters of a billion dollars in rescue plan funds that can be used. It's something that we've discussed with the administration at the schools, if there are ways that we can partner to accelerate the use of that money or expand the use of it, I think we're certainly interested. We have gotten a couple of suggestions back. I know I've heard from members of the community, retired teachers, they're willing to work as tutors, do that type of thing, because I'm sure that with the accelerator program, there were students that were probably still in need of some help. They've been through a very difficult time over the past couple of years, and to get programs set up like that for kids that may need that additional help, I think would be very beneficial as well. In addition to increasing things like the STEM program, you know, it never ceases to amaze me how creative the teachers are with the robotics and, you know, building electric guitar, whatever it might be, those types of projects are very valuable for students and get their interest in those different areas of science. So with that, I know that you, you know, it's a well-deserved break right now, I think, for the faculty to have. I've been told the high school will continue to have some activities over the remainder of the summer, but the accelerator classes have now ended.
Correct.
You know, best of luck in starting off this new year. These rescue plan funds, I think, are a real opportunity for Clark County to catch up on some of the funding that unfortunately we often miss here in Nevada. So good luck with that. Thank you for your presentation, and, you know, hopefully the school year gets off to an excellent start.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. I know it certainly well here in Boulder City with our four remarkable leaders that we have, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number six, matters pertaining to the wayfinding and signage study. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, tonight, Community Development Director Michael Mays will be handling this item, and you'll be receiving a presentation from LGA Architecture and then discussing direction regarding the plan. Michael?
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the City Council. One of the action items in the 2025 City Strategic Plan was to develop a wayfinding study. And so, as part of the fiscal year '22 budget, council approved funding for the city to hire a consulting firm to undertake that study. City selected LGA Architecture to complete that work, and they have been working on that since the beginning of 2022. In your packet, you have the draft study. What staff is looking for in terms of direction from the council is to hear LGA's presentation and to provide feedback on LGA's recommendations. There's four primary recommendations that they are suggesting for future improvements that would help to respond to the need for additional signage and wayfinding within our commercial corridors, particularly the downtown area. As part of the scope of the work, LGA also provided cost estimates for these proposed improvements. Staff is not seeking approval from the council tonight for that. That would be as part of the proposed fiscal year '24 budget. After receiving feedback from the council, staff will take that direction and would then propose funding as part of that fiscal year consideration by the council. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Craig Galati with LGA Architecture, who is going to provide his presentation and answer council questions.
Thank you, thank you, Michael. Good evening, Mayor McManus and the City Council. Pleased to be here to be able to present this to you tonight. Craig Galati with LGA. I am, there we go. So, what I want to say to kind of start with is that we started in January of 2022, and the first thing that we did was met with staff, and we talked through a variety of issues with regard to what a wayfinding and signage study should be. And what we kind of decided is that we would do a lot of research, and we brought different sign plans from lots of different similar cities. We studied Solvang, California, we studied Sedona, Arizona, we studied a couple of different cities in Utah to see what other cities were doing, and that kind of gave us a baseline of things to talk about, at least. But what we recognized, that Boulder City is unique to Boulder City, and that we needed to really understand better what would be the way to approach it. So one of the first things that we did was commissioned and ran a survey of the business district. And when I say business, business district, we sent out emails to approximately 400 businesses, not all of them in the historic downtown, but some of them, many of them were. And so, we did that, is it this one, Michael?
Right. Yeah, on the right.
Okay. So, we conducted these surveys in March of 2022. We kicked it off by going to one of the chamber mixers, and we brought little flyers or little cards that had a QR code on them, had a link to the survey, we promoted it at the Chamber of Commerce mixer. Spent a lot of time talking with a lot of people, as you can imagine, about what wayfinding was, what the study was about, but really, what I was really trying to do was get people, encourage them to actually take the survey. We also, we ran that survey from March 9 to March 22, and it was done through a SurveyMonkey software, where we had five or six questions that we asked people to add, and I'm going to, I'll go through that survey real quick with you. We also did intercept surveys, and we did them on March 19, and we were here from about two to five or so down in the downtown area. We had three of us, we were positioned at different places, and we were very respectful. If people didn't want to talk to us, we recognized that. Did get a lot of comments about, you know, whether we were political, whether we were paid by the city, what we were doing there, but we were very respectful with the people, and quite frankly, got really good responses from tourists, but at the same time, we had a few residents that wanted to talk to us, and we're absolutely happy to hear that. So this is the card, and that we, where we kicked it off, and tried to get as many of those out as we could. And then, the city sent out, through Economic Development, sent out emails to all the people with a link directly to participate in the survey. So, we got 52 people, and most of them came in the first two or three days, and then it kind of wound down after that. But we had 52 businesses take the survey, many of them from the historic district. We asked a question, you know, describe the impact of your business since I-11 was opened, because we knew that was going to be something that everybody feared and everybody was concerned about when that opened. Kind of interesting to us that many people said business improved, many people said there was no impact to their business, which is kind of a good sign. Many people said there was no impact to their business, which is kind of a good sign to to see that. We drilled down a little bit with some people in meetings and stuff, and it really had to do with less traffic on the streets that allowed people to really come down here. We asked, how do your customers find you? Kind of interesting to us is that most of the people were found through word of mouth or through internet search. Probably not super surprising, but I thought that people would say, well, it's because of the signs and we need more signs. But we didn't necessarily hear that. We had 5% said signage. There was a lot of people that said foot traffic. And I'll explain to you a little bit more in the visitor survey, what some folks told us as well. The businesses, we asked, what do your customers say is the biggest impediment to finding your business? Now, we did have, some people say signage. We did have some people said that we didn't have any impediments, that they were easily found. Lack of parking popped up and location. We had some people say, well, I can't be found because nobody can find me by a Google search and things like that. We asked, do you find the existing Boulder City signage and the wayfinding system helpful? And the businesses said, yeah, 56% said yes, and 44% said no. We never were able to really drill down and find out why they said that was no, but 56 is a pretty good number for for finding it helpful. When we answered about no, you know, we basically is, there was directional signage was more of the issue, not necessarily the business signage. And what we've we found in that is that it was more about directional to parking, that people couldn't, didn't know where to find parking. If you drive down Nevada Way and you come back around, and there's no parking spaces, they weren't sure where to go. So that's one of the things that we addressed in our in our recommendations. Other observations that I think are worth mentioning is that, you know, people had lots of different opinions on this, you know, maybe have a map like a wine walk that was developed for all the businesses. Maybe one person said that we should have a bigger sign at the town entrance. One respondent said, you know, well, nobody knows where the historic district is and where it's not. One person suggested that, you know, we need better parking signs, that the kiosk maps are not always updated, and they take time to get updated, and they fade from the sun. One respondent suggested that we need a new sign, it should direct people to the new Chamber of Commerce location, that people were having a hard time finding that. One respondent suggested that a new Boulder City website might be helpful. So those are the kind of the comments that came in there. Then we went and did our visitors' surveys, and we got 34 people that would actually talk to us, which was, we thought was a really good catch on a Saturday afternoon when people were busy and a lot of them were heading to the restaurants and and took the time to talk to us. So we only asked a few questions, but we asked where they lived, and 75% of the people were from Las Vegas, probably no surprise to you. But what I found kind of surprising is that we had people from California, from New York, from Minnesota, Illinois, Colorado, Oklahoma, and Arizona. So we had a lot of people from out of town, too, even though most of the people were from Las Vegas. We asked how often you visited Boulder City. A lot of people said monthly. We had quite a few people that were there for the first time. We had some people from out of town said, I come out here every year, and and I will continue to come out here. Some people visited weekly, and then we had the the other responses where didn't say anything or don't visit that often. We asked if they planned to go to a specific business. 53% said yes. They they had already kind of had a targeted reason for coming out here. Some of those answers were the Railroad Museum, some of them were answered, I came directly to go to Dillinger's or to go to Milo's or to to come to it, to something specific. And 47% said no, they just came out here to walk around and find their way around. We asked if the existing wayfinding and signage was helpful, and 70, 76% said yes, it's very helpful. And 15% said not, and 9% didn't matter, they said they had phones and maps and they could find their way around anywhere. We asked if, what do you like about the Boulder City commercial areas? I found this really nice. They like the small-town feel, they like the walkability, they like the historical character, they like the people, and they like the quality of the infrastructure. I I did ask that person, what does that even mean? And they said, well, the streets are nice, they're well-maintained, there's landscaping, there's, it's different than other places. So I guess I came away from thinking, you guys are doing a good job, and there's a lot of things you should keep doing. We said, what do you like, not like about Boulder City? And 55% nothing. The the higher ones, though, were parking. Some people said they wish the stores were open longer, and but signage was a was a small outlier in that. There was some discussion that we should was specific motorcycle parking. Anyway, so I think it was a pretty good survey. While we were doing that, we did run into residents, and our intention was really to talk to visitors, but residents that came up and wanted to talk to them, we were absolutely happy to talk to them. We said, asked the question, do you think customers can find the business district? And all six of them said yes. We asked if they could find parking, and no, no surprise, all six of them who live here said, yeah, I can find parking. We asked how often they visited the local businesses, and man, overwhelmingly, every day. And then we asked, have you noticed changes since Interstate 11 opened? And it was kind of a mixed bag, half and half, yes and no. But those who said yes, we asked them why, and they said decreased traffic, less trucks, and that was a good thing from the resident's perspective. And we asked them if they could offer anything else, and as you can see, a little bit of directional signage. Some people said signage is outdated, but most people didn't really have an opinion on that. And so that's kind of the results of our our survey. So we took all these survey results, and we kind of combed through them, and we made a recommendation, a list of recommendations. It was much longer than this list when we first started, but we went, came back in, and we met with with Michael and Rafi and the staff and talked through these recommendations. What we really came up with was that, you know, we could come up with some type of solution to identify the historic business district. And we had lots of different ideas, some of them crazy, some of them simple, about how we might do that. What we ended up coming back with is maybe a banner system might make sense to create a feel in the historic downtown that of that you were there, that you've arrived someplace. We also came up with, and we we talked a lot about kind of the the kiosks. Kiosks became kind of a big thing, and it's not that the existing kiosks are bad, because they're not bad. It's just that you have to manually update them, you have to, you know, slide in new maps. It's just one of those things, the sun eats them up. And so we talked a lot about, you know, most people having a mobile device, that maybe the QR code might be the right way to go and get it right to a website where they can find more information about where they want to go. And that whole QR code thing became kind of an interesting discussion, and we we had all kinds of ways to show the QR code. I think we had giant QR codes, we had small QR codes, we had different types of kiosks. We ended up landing on a couple of different ideas, all of which can be modified. And public parking was an important thing. They didn't, people didn't know, like, the parking lot right out here could actually be parked on in the weekends. They said, that's City, City Hall, we're not going to park there. So we said, you know, there are areas where you shouldn't park, like where the police park, but rest of the other parking is kind of fair game. So we thought we need to develop some kind of public parking signage solution that they would know that, and then maybe better directions to there. And then one of the things that we came up with is that while the city has a website that's done through LVCBA that talks about the businesses, and the chamber has a website that talks about the businesses, we were hoping for a more robust kind of a website. So we made a recommendation that we develop something in conjunction, either with the chamber or with LVCBA or both, so we don't end up with a bunch of different websites. It should be a collaborative effort, but we wanted a website that would do much more. And I'll talk about that in a minute. So the banner idea was something that we came up with. We thought, to keep it fairly subtle, so it doesn't slam me in the face, doesn't compete with all the other things, but something that tells you you're in a different place and that you're in a historic district. And so this is an example, a rendering of a banner that we we came up with. About two-six by two-foot, fairly small. The the existing lamp poles, we have to be very careful, because some of them are, can't handle a lot of weight and a lot of things. So we came up with something that we felt would would work really, really well with that. And I want to thank Gary from Public Works who helped us out, understanding what the banners would, what kind of weight we could have and what they might look like. And these red dots on this are showing where we suggest that we put that. So that the that the whole area is highlighted, so people know they're in it. And one of the comments, you know, is that nobody knows there's businesses on Wyoming. Well, there's not a tremendous amount of business on Wyoming, but there are businesses. So if we ended up including that as a whole district, kind of a thought. We talked about kiosks. We came up with two different ideas of a kiosk. One of them is kind of the more of an art deco, like the fan leaf kind of an idea. It would be listed that it's a directory, it would have a QR code on it, so you can go up and connect to your phone and find out wherever it is. The other idea was to create, oh, this is that that fan kind of idea. The other one was to create a more of a lamppost kind of an idea that maybe feels a little more in character with some of the existing features out here in Boulder City, but try to make it stand out, maybe different color, different something, so that you can know what it was. It would also have a QR code on it so that you could go and find what what it was, what's where you're at. And we we have certain locations within the downtown historic area that we suggest we do it. And there's a few spots on Nevada Way and a few spots on on Arizona. But I think another important thing was to connect to a couple of other areas. So this kiosk should be out at the at the Boulder City Chamber of Commerce area, it should be at the Railroad Museum, and it should be at the Boulder City Airport. And these are places where people come, and you might be able to connect other different tourists to get them down into into the historic area. Parking directional signs, pretty simple. The green and white ones, I guess people aren't seeing them, so we're suggesting to go blue, kind of universal color, make a real simple blue sign, and kind of keep it connected to how people get to parking. We do expand where we put them. I think there needs to be more of them. And then the parking location, once again, the same kind of sign, so you see the sign to where to park, and then you see the sign in front of the parking areas. Real simple, try to keep this thing not too intense. I will say that we had all kinds of crazy ideas, and your staff kind of kept us in line on those. But but the idea of identifying the parking, I think, is really important. And these are the locations, these green dots are the locations that we're suggesting that we put that. You can see the arrows showing where we're going to have directional signage, and then the dots are kind of where we have a bunch of lots and where they might go. Now, the website, and and this is not to throw any shade on the existing websites, because I think they both have different functions and they and they both work. Our idea was it was something more like Tyos Mexico does, and that it would have a lot more information on it, and it could be updated and kept updated by the city so that you'd have control over it or in conjunction with your partner, you could have control on it. That way, it's easy to change out businesses if you didn't have them. But we thought maps were really important, that you not only know the business, but you could show a map of where it would be. And then we thought the next layer would be, is that you'd have maps of parking, so people could know where's the closest parking area to the business I'm going and be able to really connect before they come out here. One of the things that that we've known in in doing business is that the younger generation is connected to their devices. The younger generation maps out where they're going, they they research where they're going before they go, and they use maps and and things very, very clearly. The other part about this website, which the other two websites don't really do at this time, is that we wanted to make it searchable. We want to make it searchable in multiple ways, so you could search just businesses in the downtown historic district. You could search restaurants in the downtown historic district. You could search things along the highway, antique stores in the downtown business or antique stores in the in in the on the highway. So you, we could make it multiple searchable, and that's kind of what we would hope to do, is have a website commission that kind of combines the best of what the chamber is currently doing, the best of what LVCBA has been doing for you, but also make it more city-focused, so you'd have that more control on it. So cost estimates. Let me just preface this, that even though they call them cost estimates, they're really budgets. And the idea was to create a budget for you that you could feel confident that you could do it in. Okay? So these are conservative estimates. We hired a professional estimating firm to do these estimates for us, and we told them to make sure that it included everything, okay? So these signs are as if you were to just turnkey it to somebody to build them. It's got the permit fees, it's got the design fees, it's got the, it's as retail, it's got the installation, it's got the the everything that you would take. Now, we recognize that the city may be able to do some of these things on their own and may want to do some of the things on their own. And if you do, the cost is going to be significantly less. And so you might just purchase the banners from somebody and then have staff put them up, but our estimate includes everything, putting them up, buying new brackets, doing all the stuff, and we included an overage in the banners in case somebody ripped one or we had one of those tremendous wins that we seem to be getting all the time now, and it ruined one of the banners. So so the banners themselves, there are 65 of them that we've located, we asked to include 10% more on it. Those, a budget is about $21,600. The kiosk options, there's nine total of them, and they're about $28,600. That's for the leaf option. The lamp option's a little bit more money, and we're going to light the lamp and, you know, make it a little more special. That's about $38,500. The the directional signage, even at retail, is reasonably priced, 3,700 bucks. I am convinced that you can do them yourself, for much cheaper. The parking location signs, the the pole-mounted signs, about 5,200 bucks to put them wherever we want them. And then we had a budget, and I talked to a couple of different website developers of 25,000 to develop a new website. Now, this is just for the development of the website, does not include maintenance that would have to be done on top of that, but that could be quoted. And I will tell you, I'm almost positive you can beat this number if you really went out to bid it or went out and talked to a whole bunch of folks. But I I just know I've been in this business too long to give you a number that's too low. I would rather give you a number and have you noodle around it on that number and then know that you, when you actually go to do it, you can get it in a better price. And once again, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what's going to happen with this crazy economy we have right now. It might get less, it might stay the same, I don't really know, but it's priced in today's today's kind of numbers, so. And that's all I got for you. Sorry it took so long, but I thought it was important to give you some of the color and flavor behind it, and I'm happy to answer any questions or hear any comments. Like I say, really, the idea is if you don't like the banner design, the banner can be redesigned. The question is, do you want banners? You know, the question is, do you want these kiosks? We can obviously, and whoever you would hire to go to the next step, can do lots of design work to either get it in your budget or to to make it look different. But that's a starting point, and I I think I would look at it as that, is, are those the improvements that make sense to you?
Thank you, Mr. Galati. And again, I sincerely appreciate the effort that went into this. I think that the study that you've done tried to look at the overall picture. You know, it's something that I've been pushing for, because quite honestly, you know, I see it happen fairly often with what appear to be tourists who are lost. You know, they come into town, it's a narrow street, there's a lot going on there with people walking around, cars pulling in and out, they're not quite sure what to do. So I think that your recommendations about the directional signs, plus, once they see or once they get to one of these parking plazas, they understand that's public parking. And sometimes that doesn't seem to be apparent to some people. I noticed how you said that the residents know where to park. Yeah, we know all the spots, right? I mean, if you can't be right in front of the business, we know you can be just around the corner from there. But for folks coming into town, I I think that's something that is missing in our uptown area, and so the recommendations you've made on that, I I think are not only doable, but desirable as well to be able to tell people, yes, this is public parking here, and you're welcome to it. So I I think that's one of the clearest things that come out of it. A couple of other things that, one thing I was disappointed in, you know, what do we do with what we currently have? Because quite honestly, that was the impetus for why I pushed this item forward. I don't see consistency with what we currently have as far as the signage goes. So what do we do with that? That didn't appear to be specifically addressed in the report. Did you have any ideas on that, or was that discussed?
Well, we we felt that it was important for, say, the banners, for instance. Well, we felt that it was important for, say, the banners, for instance, for them to stand out, and to, but not be obtrusive. And so, we kind of came up with a historic kind of reference point on that. But no, we didn't think about it should match, I mean, there's a lot of different kinds of signs.
Well, I see that as being the problem. You know, I mean, there's a couple of examples where we have two signs within just feet of one another, different design, different colors, different information. I don't see that that is a real plus, to be honest with you. I think it turns out to be confusing. So, any ideas on, you know, do we just leave that? Do we change that?
Well, our recommendation in terms of, say, the kiosks, for instance, is that when you put new kiosks in, you don't leave the old kiosks there. Let's take those out, and, you know, no disrespect to people that put them there and the work that they put into them. I think they're a little bit outdated, and something with a little more electronic connection, I think, will do you well. So, those, we really think would go away. I have not studied all the other signs in enough detail to tell you which ones should go away. I think some of the signs that identify buildings and identify certainly the government buildings, those seem to be pretty consistent, and I would probably say those should stay, but I'd have to really walk again with a different set of, different lens on to answer that question thoroughly.
Yeah, and again, I'm not, you know, trying to criticize past efforts. It just seems that there was no, you know, it was like, hey, we've got a great idea, we'll do this, and then however many years later, somebody said, hey, I've got a great idea, and we'll do this, but there wasn't much effort or thought put into, how do we get a consistent look with, especially the uptown area? So, I think that's something that, you know, needs to be addressed. Will the kiosks with the QR codes do that? They very well may. I mean, obviously, technology is here to stay, and those folks that are comfortable with it are going to be the ones that are replacing those who, you know, like to read things. So, I think there's still a place, though, for both, but the QR codes, they're obviously more compact, and you have the ability to provide a great deal more information through those. I still think, though, we may need some of those signs out there for folks to look at as they're walking around. The location of those, again, I think you've identified those fairly well. I did see one of the comments from, I believe it was one of the business respondents saying, you know, we need a sign out at the entry to town. And it's like, well, we have this big arch there, and we have this giant LED screen there. So, I think we've got that covered. I don't know if they were talking about further out on Boulder City Parkway about that. But, again, with the information that's available through smartphones, you know, I don't know how much the big signs really matter all that much anymore, but certainly having some signage, you know, historic district ahead, or something like that, might be worthwhile if that reference was to further out on Boulder City Parkway. Regarding the banners, you know, I think you've covered that very well. There's a limitation, obviously, on the size of those, but to give folks the idea that there's information, or when they are within the historic district, but through that QR coding and all of that, to probably have something that might tell more of the story about Boulder City and how it relates to Hoover Dam. And, you know, I really think that should be the theme. I mean, it always has been here in Boulder City. There's a reason we rely on the image of Hoover Dam, because we wouldn't be here without it. Regarding the website, you know, I think that we do have the capability already. LVCBA budgets $50,000 a year for a website that is devoted to Boulder City. And obviously, we're working with some of the premier marketing individuals, professionals in the entire world with that organization. I know that they are willing to do this, they have the capability, obviously, to do it, and I think that rather than creating yet another website out there, that should be the direction, and, you know, having spoken with the staff there, they're ready to do this. What I'm afraid of is they've not been given the direction that would cover the areas that you're talking about. But I think that they stand ready to do that. It's a matter of us getting to them, what we would like to see, and the information regarding the updates. You know, they're not going to be able to do those updates, okay? They don't become aware of changes out here in Boulder City unless they're told about those. So, I think there are excellent possibilities for city staff to be involved in that, and get that information to them as it's being done. I'm concerned about putting too much of that information on our own Boulder City website. You know, we are a government here, and certainly, we can help businesses by putting some information out there, but I do think that working with the LVCBA is the better direction to go. That is, yep, it's a taxing authority, but it has a focus, and that's to market things here in Southern Nevada. They do it very well, but as a community, as a business community as well, because this is not just the responsibility of the city to do this. You know, we look at something like the Fremont Street Experience in downtown Las Vegas. You know, that is a business organization. They do come to primarily Las Vegas events, which then gets funding through LVCBA, to do different things down there. But that is an association of businesses that hire their own security, do their own maintenance, do their own promotion, do all of those types of things. Now, obviously, if you have several hotels that are generating millions of dollars every day, that's a different story of what they're able to accomplish. But we really need to get our businesses on board as well, rather than the expectation that, well, the taxpayers are going to do everything for me. They're going to advertise for me, they're going to pick up my trash for me, they're going to keep the streets clean, they're going to do all these things for me, and all I have to do is run my business. You know, again, my father and stepmother ran a small business for 25 years. I know what kind of blood, sweat, and tears they put into that business, and I see many of our businesses do that. But there needs to be, I think, more of a collaborative effort with our businesses to say, you know what, we can help you out with some of this stuff, we can especially help you with the mechanics of it, but this needs to also involve the business community very heavily. They've got to have some skin in the game and not wait for the taxpayers to fund all of these efforts for them. And we're ready, I think, as a city, as a city government, we're ready to say, you know what, let's talk about this, let's see how we might be able to help you. And I believe that there are avenues already out there. As I said, your recommendation for the website was at $25,000. LVCBA already has budgeted $50,000 for us. So, there are things that we can leverage on that, but overall, I think that your study brings out a lot of good points, and would certainly bring some uniformity to what we're trying to do in our uptown area especially, but it's going to benefit the businesses out on Boulder City Parkway. And once the Railroad Museum expansion occurs, I see a lot of connectivity there between those two efforts, between that and our uptown area. Again, appreciate the work that was done on this.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. I was, I thought it was very interesting, and I'm thinking percentages of respondents, and actually, that's not bad. About 12% of the businesses responded, that's not a bad response rate for that. I did take some notes, and I agree that, you know, I don't think we need another website. I think that, working with the LVCBA, working with the Chamber of Commerce, there needs to be one consistent message, and, you know, are they going to go in and find information in one place and then say, well, I'm going to be committed to this one, and where do businesses now want to put their energy in? So, I think working with, rather than separate from, is really important. I'm not sure what, I don't like the idea of adding extra lamp posts to corners. I think that we already have corners. I have a friend who's visually impaired, and she has a hard enough time right now finding the truncated dots, and if you start adding extra posts and poles to intersection corners, suddenly, you have a problem. So, personally, I'd like to, I love the idea of the QR codes and the banners, but I'd like to see them on existing posts, rather than, I don't think they weigh very much. And the other thing is, I understand it's an example, the banners. I'd like to see multiple graphic ideas. You know, we have the thing we're known for. We also have, yeah, I'm looking at this other sign with the Longhorn sheep and pictures of suns, and the dam, so I think it would be important to see other ideas that have some sort of symbolic reference to who we are and what we do. And I think it's important, we want to make sure we get people to parking spaces, but I think we also have to have a discussion on parking. Is there enough parking? I know there's times when I'm driving back into town, and it's not easy to find a parking space. So, making sure we're directing people to the right places, and that we do have enough parking available. And I think, I think that's it, but I do think that we need to really consider, are we creating barriers to movement by putting too many items on it? We have corners with lamp posts and art, and the boards, and suddenly, that becomes an issue. That's it. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Thank you. Thank you for the work that you've done, and for the information that you've given us. I know that a lot's already been said, and I'm going to probably restate some of them. I do like the idea of the banners. I think that that is really the large pull for our city, is the historic area, the historic district. We put a lot of time, energy, and effort into keeping that, and restoring, and putting that together. So, I like the idea that the visual is there for them to know that this is still all part of our history by the banners. So, I do like that idea. I also express the same concern as Councilwoman Bridges, is we do get congested sometimes on those sidewalks, and we do get some foot traffic down there, and a lot of those businesses spill out onto our sidewalks already, so our sidewalks become a little bit more crowded. I would like to see, is it possible to put it on the actual existing post and still make it noticeable enough that people will understand that that's a place where you can get information? Or, because the QR code doesn't have to be really big, you know, but they do have to know that it exists and that it's there. I like the idea of a consistent theme, not going pell mell into it and creating another theme, that hopefully, we can get some consistency, and that that would center around the historic district. I know that we talked about that, I don't know where I said if I'm in the old generation or the new generation, because part of me really likes reading when I go places, like to see if I went to a water filtration building, and it had a little placard out there, and it gave all the little bit of history first off before I entered in, I would love to see that. But on the same token, I still probably would get out my phone and kind of read it on my phone. So, I don't know if in some of the most important spots in our city, where the history really is being retold, or told, or preserved, if there's a place for maybe those specific things in those areas, and then in the other areas, having that other option. So, that's kind of where I stand with that. And the parking, it is pretty crucial that we point them to parking, because right on the thorough way, there is no parking, really. I mean, there is, but there isn't, when you think about the number of people who want to visit the businesses. So, signage for that, I think, is crucial, and pointing them to the spots we do have. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fox?
Yeah, thank you for all the information. Regarding the website, does that, the software updates, is that included in the $25,000?
Typically, when you develop a website, you have a maintenance agreement of some sort, and usually, the first year is in that original design fee. And after that, there's a fee, nominal fee, per year to maintain it, make sure it's Google searchable, and that nothing gets in and breaks it. That's my understanding of website. Not being a web designer, I don't know exactly. Like I say, I called a couple of web guys that I know and just got a budget, is really what my intention was.
Okay. Yeah, because, you know, nowadays, there's updates every other week, so. Yeah, I like the idea of the banners, I really do. I would like, you know, if we can get it to where we could have the businesses in town maybe sponsor like a banner with their name and logo on the bottom or somewhere on there, to help, you know, with the cost of the banners, I think that'd be a great idea. I did like the idea of on other places here in town where there's like a physical article or something, information on the building with the QR code, because, you know, not everyone has a smartphone, or, you know, I don't like busting on my phone to read something, or even when I go to a restaurant, and I have to scan a code to read the menu, you know, I'm not a fan of that. But yeah, having like the, you know, more important spots in town, something physical there would be nice. Yeah, I'm not a fan of the lamp post. Again, yeah, there's a lot of clutter on the corners. And that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. I think what the survey shows is that we don't need to reinvent the wheel here, but I think it's also obvious that consistency seems to be the issue, right? And that there is, hasn't been consistency throughout the years. As has been mentioned, the sidewalks are being cluttered. I know I had brought that up when we were talking about the new bistro lighting that we want to put in, so there's always, already, you know, thoughts and concepts that are going to continue to put more and more to our streets. So, I think the more we can actually consolidate, I think that would be better. You know, maybe if the QR codes could be on the banner themselves, you know, depending on the size, it shouldn't be an issue for the camera to also pick that up. I think if we can consolidate this, we can actually, you know, hopefully, take back a little bit of the sidewalks that we had, some of that more open space, that really is, I think, a testament to the design of the city and the walkability that we've kind of moved away from. There likely are areas where maybe a more prominent directory sign that does not involve a QR code might be appropriate. We probably don't need many of them, but, you know, at least one, because, you know, we all might take for granted that, you know, cell phones and QR codes and all that is so easily accessible, but it's not easily accessible for everyone, you know? So, it might be important to still have some of that more basic signage, but I think what we should focus on is that consolidation of what is our signage, where is it going to be most important, and then allowing that to go forward. You know, as far as parking goes, yeah, if maybe a different type of sign, you know, the blue sign is going to be more standard, and people will recognize it as opposed to what we have, I think that's great. You know, I do find it a little, you know, as somebody who, I've toured the country, I've been in cities, you know, all sizes, you know, very comparable to Boulder City, we've got more parking than just about anywhere I've ever been personally. You know, I do find it a little funny that it is always such an issue that is brought up. You know, I have an easier time finding parking, you know, during Art in the Park than I do just trying to be downtown Las Vegas on any given weekend. Now, I live here, obviously, that's not the same that's true for tourists, and I know that that's part of what we're trying to accomplish here. So, yeah, maybe making sure that people are aware that parking is available would be important. I do have, you know, just as we've all been talking about with the, about consolidation of our signage, you know, I look at the recommendation for that parking sign at City Hall, you know, and then it's right in front of our landscaping, and, you know, I feel like it kind of cuts away from, you know, the visuals, the, you know, aesthetics of the area. You know, so if there are other ways that we can address that parking need without adding additional signage, it's going to interrupt that rhythm, that flow that we see as we come down, but still be, you know, visible. I'm not sure what that answer is, but, you know, I would like to think that maybe there is something that says that, maybe even if it's just as your turning down, you know, into the parking lot, you know, if it says public parking there at the entrance on the street itself. I don't know if that helps those people who are looking for it and can't see that. But I would like to see us try to consolidate to not having to put a sign up for everywhere, right? You can lead a horse to water, but you can't get it to drink sometimes. So other than that, I do think this is, I think having the survey itself is a tremendous help because, as I said before, it really shows that we are doing a lot of things right here in Boulder City. And I think really what we need to do is just, you know, find that sweet spot of consistency, you know, make sure we have the appropriate amount of information without overdoing it. Because, you know, I think that's kind, we've gone in that direction too much, you know, and I think this gives us the opportunity to rethink that and actually make our streets, you know, a safer, smarter, more, you know, economic streetscape. So I really appreciate all the work you've done and put into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of other thoughts that I had, Mr. Galati, on the, you know, and I think it's been brought up a little bit here. You know, when you do talk to people and say, you know, why are you here in Boulder City? Where are you from? You know, consistently, we see a great deal of the customer base here is from Las Vegas. You know, you had a number at 75%. I think when we've looked at sales here in town, it's been around 50 or a little over 50%. Clearly, that's a substantial amount of the customer base here. And then the question that you ask them, you know, what do you like about it? Why do you come here and how often do you come here? It seems that some of them come here pretty often and they had some pretty clear things. They like the small town atmosphere, they like the walkability, and they like the infrastructure, which I found a little bit humorous as well. It's like, okay, early 1930s, huh? But yes, we do care for our community. It's an attractive place. And that's important, obviously, to those people who come here. So once again, I think that when we look at a website and what we're doing with signage and all of that, you know, what are people coming here for? You know, there was a big push in the past to have off-highway vehicles and that was going to be a spectacular thing. You know, they're a lot of fun, but is that the customer base that comes here? I don't know that it is. You know, there may be some place that's appropriate for that, but our uptown area didn't seem to be one of those places. So I also would encourage our businesses, our Chamber of Commerce, you know, focus on who your customers are and try and design things that will attract them. You know, I get that there are other communities all over the Southwest that have different attractions, but I think that some of the ideas you've put together are trying to do that, trying to bring that consistency of what this uptown area is supposed to look like. You know, we had a discussion not too long ago about these bistro lights. Yeah, I still think that that's probably not the thing, but I don't know. One other thing, last item, charging stations. We are, you know, talking about some plans here to get, we already have one, we may have others in these parking plazas, obviously electrified vehicles are what we're going to. That might be another thing that tells people, hey, you can charge your vehicle up while you're in having lunch or doing some shopping. So I don't know that they've come up with an international symbol for that yet, but if there is going to be signage for parking, it probably should include that capability as well.
My guess is there is a symbol for it. I don't know it off the top of my head.
There's got to be, you know, something with a plug or something on it, lightning bolt or whatever it is. But again, thank you very much. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Sorry, just a side note or a side thought. We do have a population of people who come in to the airport, they come into golf, they come in to ride the train, like you said. And I love how you addressed that, that it would be nice to have something in those locations that gave an overall place for them to go to know what else is available in town, brings them down to that downtown area, brings them into town a little bit more, so they know there's more to see. So I did like that idea and I would like to see us progress forward with something of that idea. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much. All your comments have been fantastic. And I know we'll take note of them and see what the next step is. But I really appreciate getting that feedback.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, there is an international symbol for a charging station. It looks like a little fuel pump with the letters EV on it and an electric plug coming out the side.
Okay.
I figured there was a cord involved somewhere.
We all learned something today then.
Well, again, Mr. Galati, appreciate it. And I do think this study is going to lay the groundwork to bring us some consistency to especially our historic uptown area.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to present to you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, anything additional? Mr. Mays?
Just that staff has sufficient direction from the council. We appreciate your input. Thank you.
Thank you for getting this project to this point. All right, we'll move to item number seven, presentation of the strategic plan implementation action through June 2022. Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Each quarter, staff provides an update to you and the community on the city's strategic plan and its implementation plan. As a reminder, the plan is a roadmap for staff to improve processes and ensure we're providing the absolute best service to the community. Management partners and organization with more than 25 years in government consulting worked with council, staff, and the community to create the strategic plan in 2018. We're now 85% to achieving the five goals, which include achieve prudent financial stewardship featuring 10 strategies, invest in infrastructure, which features five strategies, manage growth and development with 11 strategies, promote historic preservation with eight strategies, and sustain a high level of public safety services with seven strategies. While many of the strategies have been achieved to date, many of them are ongoing continuing strategies to keep us moving forward. So let's take a look at the first goal, which is achieve prudent financial stewardship. There are only two strategies left to finish. And for strategy eight specifically, which is to communicate and share financial successes with the community, we've created an online survey for American Rescue Plan input from the community and gained feedback from that. We organized a town hall discussion regarding ARPA funding as well. Both were heavily promoted via news releases and social media posts. And we've analyzed data and input for a full report on the ARPA funding feedback. And that report and recommendation for an additional spend plan will go to council in July. The next goal is invest in infrastructure. The goal is fairly complete, but there are some items that are ongoing for the duration of the plan. With strategy one, prioritizing capital improvement plan projects to address health and safety while maximizing available funds, we included the ARPA-funded projects, which were identified and included in the financial year 23 capital improvement plan budget. And that's in accordance to the spend plan that the council has already approved to date. The utility advisory committee recommended approval to the city council of the CIP for financial year 23. And the CIP section of the webpage has been updated, including the links to ClearGov for residents to utilize. And ClearGov makes our city budgets much more accessible and interactive and user-friendly for the residents. Moving on to the next goal, managing growth and development. There are two strategies left to complete in this goal. For strategy one, identification of opportunities for new and small business development that will provide a diverse revenue stream with minimal impact on the quality of life, council authorized a November ballot question to ask voters if they're interested in selling a 16.3 acre plot of land near Boulder City Parkway and Veterans Memorial Drive for the development of a grocery store and associated retail uses there. With promotion of historic preservation, there are three strategies still underway. For strategy four, amending existing codes to achieve historic preservation goals, the council directed staff to proceed with a text amendment that would recommend changes to the city code regarding historic preservation. While we're working with the Historic Preservation Committee, property owners, and stakeholders, the planning commission will consider the public hearing and text amendment in August at their meeting then. So goal five is sustain a high level of public safety services. And we have one strategy left to complete in that. For the police department, strategy six, communicate and celebrate the low crime rate and other service excellence. There have been several news releases, news flashes, and social media updates that were issued on several items of interest. A man was arrested with multiple charges after he led police on a multi-neighborhood chase. The antique military-grade bomb that was found in the desert and brought to a residence, leading to a localized evacuation, that situation was remedied. And then the animal control shelter facility upgrades, which will improve safety for staff and patrons of the facility, is nearing completion and we'll be having an open house to show everyone the changes there. For the fire department, let's look at strategy three, which is define and disseminate standards to ensure a high level of public safety services. Fire department recently initiated a new business community CPR AED program. So they've acquired 37 new AEDs. They've been ordered and they are currently placing them in the businesses now. And the community CPR classes are being offered and will continue as long as the demand is present on that. So as I wrap up, I do encourage everyone to check out the plan as well as the many implementation plan updates at bcnv.org/stratplan. And I stand for any questions or comments that you might have.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
I just want to thank you so much for keeping us up to date with what's going on. I think it's really great that it shows through this that we're, you know, it's not just having the goals out there, but actually showing that we are taking the steps to ensure that we are reaching and meeting those goals. I think that's always very important because it can be easy to kind of lose track of what was it that we were trying to accomplish in the first place if we're not actually following through and showing that we are doing it. The only comment I really had was with regards to goal D of the promoting historic preservation. There is, still maintains that one area that says the strategy was placed on hold in 2019. I think at this time, with the help of, and I do see the note in here, with the help of Northwind Consulting that we have, you know, I think we are, we should be ready to start moving again in that direction. And I see here that we have an anticipated date to begin here coming up in July. So it looks like we will be moving forward with that at this time.
That's correct.
Yes. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? You know, one thing that I thought of as looking through these goals, and something that I think has become very clear over the past six months, we have a changed situation with regard to the Colorado River with the levels at Lake Mead. And that has always been a concern. We live in a desert, we know that. But the acceleration of that problem that we've seen has gone at a rate that the Bureau of Reclamation did not anticipate. We're seeing the levels at the lake drop far faster than what had been anticipated just a few months ago. And I really do think that we need to move more quickly with what we're doing. I know there's been a lot of work by staff looking at what we can do to reduce the amount of water we're using here in Boulder City. The federal government, I believe it was two weeks ago, told Nevada, Arizona, and California that you would have 60 days to come up with a solution to this problem. And if that doesn't happen, the federal government will find a solution for us. I don't know what that looks like, other than they're suggesting that the consumption be reduced somewhere between two and four million acre feet of water. That's an enormous amount of water to reduce. So we don't know what's going to happen there, but in about six weeks, we're going to find out if something can be worked out or if the federal government is going to, I don't know, start turning off spigots or what they're going to do. But that is something that I don't believe could have been anticipated in our strategic plan, but has certainly come to be a critical factor. You mentioned the rescue plan money. Some of that money is devoted for water projects. Again, I know working with staff, you know, that we've had conversations with the water district about upgrading our current wastewater facility plant to be able to reuse that water for irrigation. These things seem to be having a much larger impact than what we had anticipated just a short time ago. So I think that needs to be something that is looked at hard. And again, going back to the rescue plan money, you know, we've had the first amount of that money for over a year now. It's probably time to start getting some of these projects going because I would hate to see us be in a position where some of that money would have to be returned and not put towards the benefits that it was intended for the community.
Two things I'd like to offer for the council and the public. So at the next city council meeting, the July meeting, the Southern Nevada Water Authority will be coming to provide a presentation regarding a water conservation plan. So that should be informative. And then at the first August meeting, the Water Authority will also be coming to present regarding the reuse of the city's effluent. So those are both really positive steps. Looking forward to doing our part.
And again, I know that we have been working, staff has been working on this for some time. Community development, Mr. Mays has, you know, already gotten a great deal of input from the community. There's been a plant list that's been identified, all of those types of things. I get we're at the point now where we're going to be able to execute some of these things, but we've talked about it for a long time. And, you know, beyond our control, the situation has gotten much worse in recent months. Councilmember Jorgensen?
In lieu of what the mayor just said, my question is, I see that this is strategic plan for 2020 to 2025. I also see that 2018 was the date in which we worked on that or started the implementation, or at least thoughts on that. Since we do have some new areas to look at or new concerns, when will we be working on the next area for strategic plan, say 2025 to 2030?
Typically, you would start about two years prior. So we would most likely begin that process early next year, unless directed otherwise. So.
Okay. And in that, we could put maybe some of these concerns too, to be able to address them long term.
Most definitely.
If we need to. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, on top of the water issue, which is excruciatingly important, and we've been talking about it for three years and it makes the back of, the hairs on the back of my neck stand on end because we're still talking about it. But also this morning, talking about all-in and greenhouse gas emissions and sort of the root of some of these issues that we're dealing with, along with waste management and the diversion of green waste and those kinds of items that are currently all going into our landfill. So hopefully in the future, I'd like to see personally, part of the strategic plan have to do with environmental sustainability, both mitigation and the adaptation that will be considered going forward. All of these things, I think, are tied up very closely and all need to be addressed seriously. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Appreciate the update, Mr. Teder. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will take a 15-minute recess and resume at 6:45. All right, I will call the meeting back to order following the recess. And we're on to item 9. I will call the meeting back to order following the recess, and we're on to item number eight. If we could have everyone take their seats. Item number eight for possible action, matters pertaining to the 2022 land management process. And as we discussed yesterday during my briefing, we will be counting process versus plan as Mr. Mays makes his presentation.
Michael Mays, Community Development Director, will be handling this item.
So Boulder City is unique. We are unique because most of the land within our jurisdiction is owned by the city, as opposed to most jurisdictions that have private owners that own that land. And because of that, the city 20 years ago adopted an ordinance and a process that provided for a more transparent, structured process for the consideration disposition of city-owned land, either for lease or for sale, and that is the land management process. Normally, each year, starting in September, we have an annual process that occurs, where we post notices in newspapers and ask if there are applicants interested in applying for consideration of city-owned land. But in addition to that, the code contemplates requests throughout the year, and that's what this is. So on April 26th of this year, City Council entertained several requests additions to the land management process. You advanced two of them forward, and as part of the requirement contained in the code, that requires consideration by the Planning Commission of the proposed uses. And I want to emphasize that with the land management process, this is the beginning of the consideration of these proposed uses. Even if the City Council adds the two proposals that are being considered tonight to the list, it does not mean that they will move forward and be developed. It is the first step in the process. Following that step, there is usually zoning considerations and opportunities to more closely look at the proposed use and its appropriateness at that location. There's negotiations for leases that must occur. And in the cases of the sale of land, obviously, it has to be approved by the voters of our community. So the Planning Commission, at a public hearing, considered the two proposals, which I'm going to briefly describe in a second. And at that meeting on June 15th, recommended five to two to add them to the list and bring it back to the City Council. So let me begin with what we refer to as LMP number 2203. This is what is referred to as the Elite RV Proposal, approximately 74 acres. This is south of Boulder City Parkway, along Veterans Memorial Drive, and these parcels surround the Boulder Creek Golf Course. When the City Council considered this proposal back in April, you raised several questions that you wanted staff and other commissions to evaluate before we brought this back to you. One of those questions was, how would this development impact our existing infrastructure and resources? As you can see in the staff report, and the minutes contained within your packet, staff has evaluated these questions. And the existing infrastructure in Veterans Memorial Drive is sized to a capacity that can accommodate this use, that will not require upsizing of those utilities, will not require the city to invest in additional infrastructure, and will not tax our resources. In addition to that, City Council had asked for input from the Parks and Recreation Commission, because these parcels with the proposed uses, which is RV Resort with cabins that can be rented, making sure that that wouldn't have a negative impact in the golf course. So in your packet, you have both the minutes from the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, when this was considered, as well as the motion, and specifically, the points that the commission is asking the City Council to take into consideration if this project moves forward. Many of these points would be something that would be considered with the rezoning, as well as negotiations for the lease. In addition to that proposal, we have the proposal we refer to as LMP number 2204. This is a 16.3 acres located at the southeast corner of Boulder City Parkway and Veterans Memorial Drive. The intent for this use is the potential sale of the 16 acres for a grocery store and related retail uses. You will see in your packet the excerpt of the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting. There were several residents of the adjacent Gingerwood Development that expressed their concern about the development of this property and the impact that this property would have on their residential development. In addition, when we were looking at the infrastructure along Boulder City Parkway and Veterans Memorial Drive, the utility and public works departments also looked at what would be the needs for this parcel, and also believe that the existing infrastructure can support this development. So as with every consideration by the council of adding new properties to the list, this requires a public hearing to obtain input. And then you have before you Proposed Resolution 7470. That resolution contains the two proposals that would be added to the list, and certainly the council's discretion to modify that, if you only want to advance one and add it to the list, or to both. And with that, I can answer any questions, and we certainly have representatives from Elite RV here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. And again, this will be a public hearing, so at this time, if council members have specific questions, this would be the time for that, for Mr. Mays or for the applicant. But opinions or comments should probably be held until the conclusion of the public hearing. Any questions at this time? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, my question is more procedural, and that is, for example, the 16.3 acres. It is going, it is going to be on the ballot for a public vote. What happens if it goes on the ballot for a public vote, and it's not on the land management process plan, list?
If the City Council were to decide to not advance this tonight, we would come back to you on July 12th for reconsideration of that resolution for the ballot question.
Reconsider the ballot question?
Correct.
Okay, so the two are connected. It wouldn't be, there would be a ballot question, and then no place to put the thing if it passed.
Right. Proceedurally, because of the length of time that's involved in preparing ballot questions, forming the committees, that had to occur first, but these two are tied.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this time? All right, we will open the public hearing then. Again, this is on the two parcels, one for a potential lease for Elite RV, and the other for a potential sale of 16 acres designated for a grocery store. Is there anyone who would like to speak on one or both of those, present in chambers? All right, anyone wishing to call in may do so at this time. The phone number 702-589-9629. This is a public hearing regarding additions to the land management process for lease of land for a RV development, and a second parcel for a potential grocery store.
Public comment?
Yes, I do, about 16 acres.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Ron Henderson. I live in Gingerwood.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I am against this proposal. I thought that was a flood control area, and I just don't see why they need this development here for a market or shopping center. There is a lot more areas that could be developed, and I don't think it really would be a great place to have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can anyone wishing to call in? Madam City Clerk, were there any written comments received for this item?
None were received.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing regarding the land management process. Two parcels, one for a potential lease of land for an RV development, RV park development, and the second for potential sale of land for a grocery store. Mayor Lectarty, if you would like to speak, we can do that. If someone calls in, we'll pick that call up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Pretend this is a call-in then.
If you could state your name for the record?
Joe Hardy, for the record, thank you. My concern is 16.3 acres being designated for a grocery store. And if we put that stipulation on the land, we may not get a grocery store, and then we would have to, and I guess the city attorney could probably answer this, about what would happen if we don't get a grocery store, but we get retail only, and that is the concern I have, is we may put ourselves in a box. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during the public hearing? All right, hearing no others, we will close the public hearing. Mr. Mays? Anything additional, or can we now open this up for comments from council members?
Nothing further from staff.
Thank you. All right. Now, if anyone would like to discuss their viewpoint on this, now would be the appropriate Councilmember Jorgensen?
So going along with some of the questions, and the one that Joe Hardy just had, if we put this on the land management process, and it was specifically for that, and it was determined that that was not what was going to be used, it could be taken off the land management process and used for something else, or not used at all?
So with respect to the land management process, it's associated with specific uses. So if that use does not advance forward, then nothing else can be done with the property without coming back to the City Council and going through the process again. We've had a couple of examples over the years where one use was contemplated, that did not happen, and some, another applicant came along with an alternative use, and it had to go through the process. The key to the land management process is to make sure that the citizens of our community are well informed about what the city is contemplating with the disposition of land.
And just to follow up on that, you know, the initial resolution that the council had, or direction that the council had put forth, there was discussion, and the city attorney had worded it, that this can only be for a grocery store. And the question that is going out to the voters is that it would only be for a grocery store. So if that is not the case, if there are no offers on the land, then, as you've stated, it has to go back through the process. It would require another ballot question, since it is over an acre of land. So we have tried to do this in such a way that the only purpose of this land would be for a grocery store and potential other commercial interests, but the primary purpose must be for a grocery store. Is that correct, Madam City Attorney?
Yes, and the explanation, it explains that any sale of land would include a deed restriction that would restrict the use of the land for primarily a grocery store and associated retail uses.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Sorry, I guess this is also the time that we could talk about Elite RV Project. Looking at the things that the park and recreation brought before us, some of them could be looked at prior, actually, right? So more information could be given to us with some of these concerns. Because I would like to address these, just since they did come up, and it did ask us to address them. It doesn't mean that, I wouldn't say that it could be on the land management process at this point, because we're not making the decision to actually put this in place. However, I would like those concerns, or those processes, vetted out a little better, so that we could have that information.
So if you would like, we could have Elite RV respond to some of the points that were raised.
Sure.
I got, I got the list right here.
Thank you. There were several questions that we addressed at that meeting, and since that meeting, we have done some work to uncover more answers. What was your concerns? Write down the list.
Actually, it's the entire list, since they asked us to do it, and I wanted to be able to have response for them in regards to them having us look at these a little bit closer, so that it satisfied the need, I guess, to investigate it a little bit closer.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, before you go any further, can you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Manzullo, I'm a representative of Elite RV Resort. And the, at the Planning Commission meeting, prior to that, we were sent a list of questions, which we then responded to, and they were taken into consideration. Additionally, at that meeting, we answered these questions, and I don't know if that made it into that information as well. But I would like to go over the list. First question I have was access to the golf course and transportation, or transportation of patrons from RV Resort to the course. So that was really a question of how would we prevent somebody, if we are renting golf carts, could they make it onto the course? And just like the golf course, the golf club now has technology where they geofence air. And just like the golf course, the golf club now has technology where they geofence areas with a GPS on the cart, and they track them on a map. They're alerted, just our security be alerted, and it actually shuts the power off to the cart, so that they can't go past where we want them to go past. And they're warned, put it reverse, so you can go back to where you're supposed to be, basically. So, it's a technology question that we can, that actually the golf course answered for us quite nicely. The second was water usage of the project. And that's something that, looking at this from a standpoint of if we were to develop land, we could put something there, the use in an RV resort environment or a temporary stay at a hotel environment is going to be considerably less than the water usage of single-family housing, of multifamily housing, of things of that nature. The total, or the total water requirements, if I recall, were less than one percent increase on the load of the city. And the city engineer was at the Planning Commission meeting and gave quite a few responses to that. I don't have all the technicals of that, but it was a favorable position for the city. The overall number of lots and lot sizes, those specifically around the course, those are actually in the presentation. I'm sure I don't have it up right now, but in the map, they're actually broken out, those exact sizes. They are at the, I'll say at the higher end of an RV park space size. Typically, those spaces are around thirty by eighty, and our spaces are about fifteen to twenty percent larger than that on the small side. And some of the spaces go up and are quite large to accommodate a vehicle as well as a number of small, small park model cabins, as more of a higher-end luxury type of lot. Security issues and policing course activity from resort visitors. So, just like the golf course, we have a, we'll have a security staff there. In our case, it'll be a 24/7 security staff onsite and patrols, in addition to cameras, those types of systems, alerts, so that we can, we can watch that. A question did come up at that meeting, if we would include a fence. And our reply at that time, we're just not far enough along in the development of this to understand if that's going to be required or not. Another question that we'll get to in a moment was the, the next question here actually, is the setbacks and the tranquility on the golf course. The setbacks that we used are similar to the Boulder City Golf Course, the municipal golf course. We looked at what the setbacks were there. Typically, when designing a course with housing, with buildings around it, you go 150 feet from the center of the fairway is the, is sort of the mark. And actually, in the case of the municipal course here, there's some that are down considerably lower than that. In our case, the minimum is 150, and most setbacks are in the 250-foot range. Additionally, of the 27 holes, I believe we touched five of the holes, and each one of those is one portion of that. So, the setbacks, the total golf course frontage lineage is quite small compared to the entirety of the golf course. Culmination of the lease and what would happen to that property should something go awry with the lease? That's something that would be negotiated, but it's something that we can definitely put in the lease. It is a leased property, so if the, if our business, heaven forbid, was to go belly up, that property would become, or would remain with the city, would default back to the city. There's questions that were discussed, could a surety bond or insurance of some type be put in place to accommodate for the removal of that? And those are all things that can, that can be worked out contractually. We're not, we're not breaking any new grounds here when it comes to contract law and land lease negoti, or land lease material. Taking into consideration the golf professionals' concerns on the proposed project, specifically the security of the course we discussed, the potential impact to local golfers, and whether they would have ease of access to tee times at Boulder City Golf Courses, as well as availability for golfers from Las Vegas Valley. I'm, as a business owner, I want it to be as successful as possible. That's part of the mission, and that will, that could potentially bring people to the area that are playing golf. The real magic question, and we don't know the answer to, is of the, of, at any given time, if we have 293 spots and we're at 60% full, so we have roughly 100 RVs there, that's 200 to 300 people there, how many of those individuals play golf, came to play golf, will be playing golf that day? And we just don't know the answer to that until they actually open. From the standpoint of how can I assure that the locals here can play? I think that can be answered a number of ways, just on a technical side, as far as locals passes, locals privileges, locals reserve tee times. There's, there's things that can be done from the golf course management side that can, that can address that. And by the way, that'd be a great problem to have, if there's so much business that that's an issue. And the last one I had was liability to the city, which I think we, we covered with the lease discussion as well. So, entertain any other questions about that?
Thank you for that, just going through that. Yeah, looking at people walking onto the golf course, what could you do to mitigate that? I mean, I know that the carts can stop, but you can walk nine holes.
Yeah, there's, there's security for that specifically. There's, there's golf course rangers. That's what they do, is to do that. As well as, from a physicality situation on that golf course, depending on how we, we play with the setbacks and whatnot, there may be hedgerows, or there may be other things that will come into play when we develop that out, when we architect it out, to, to, to make sure that that doesn't happen. As well as, when you actually come, when you go to a hotel and you sign on the dotted line, so to speak, you're following their rules. There is a document there that we'll have as well, that you're going to adhere to these rules, these policies, as well as, as well as posted rules on our property, as well as to where you can't go.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
Airplanes. So, how do you address that? I mean, I noticed in there the discussion of the fact that there will be airplanes flying fairly low over, overhead of these very, very expensive RVs. And I see there's a spot where there's an easement, where they won't be. But explaining to people that this is going to be somewhat noisy certain times.
That's an item that was brought to me, and since then, I've looked at the flight logs to see when the, when the planes are taking off and landing, what the schedules are, how much of that schedule is actually used, how many flights are canceled, those sorts of things. And there is nothing at this time to give me any pause. When the time is right, we will have noise engineers there to collect the data. And as I told the Parks and Rec Commission, if I need to sit out there for a couple of days in a lawn chair and clock it, then that's what I'll do. Because that's something, obviously, that's going to be concerning to me, is if I'm going to have those, those prop planes right over my head, or, or other issues. And I'd like to get a better feel for that. But that's absolutely something that we're, we're interested in as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fox? Actually, you're talking about the other parcel. Why don't we finish up with this particular one, since he's available now? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking the time, obviously, to, to try and address many of these issues. I know when we talked, I had always said, you know, it really is going to be dependent on having, you know, community buy-in. And I think you guys are showing that you're doing a lot to try and address the many questions the community have. I do think as this moves forward, I think it's great that you were able to provide some of the feedback to some of those questions now, but obviously, things change. You know, this is, we're at the very beginning of this. These are the questions that we're going to have to go back and revisit, you know, as, you know, plans become a little bit more firm, you know, and there's a little bit better understanding of what exactly we're looking at. So, again, I appreciate all the effort that you have put into trying to work with our community and really in partnership with it. One question, I, it's not so much a question as much as it is a comment, is, you know, with regards to the water use, you know, there was a comment about the ability to use reclaimed water. You know, obviously, that hasn't gone forward yet with the city, but that's something that we are hoping that we will have access to. And so, I don't know if this will be, is the right, appropriate question for you, but maybe more for city manager, city staff, if that's something that we can look into is, you know, if we do have reclaimed water as being able to be used for the golf course, which they'll be located right next to, would that not be a possibility for them to be able to use that for their landscaping?
There's a lot of variables in that question, but in theory, yes.
It's certainly something that I think we should be considering. I know there was a comment about lush green courses. I think that might be a little, a little too wishful thinking with our current water crisis.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. I, myself, do appreciate the desert landscaping that you guys are looking to do with more adaptive native plant materials. I think that's a really important direction that we, as a community, need to be heading anyways. But I do think that's something that we also need to, we need to talk about. I understand that, yeah, the impact on our, on our water allotment is minimal, you know? We don't even use our water allotment, but the allotment's only as good as how much water there is there, you know? So, at the end of the day, we need to make sure that we are being sustainable. And I, you know, I think, you know, this isn't necessarily for, this isn't for, you know, this project right here, but in general, we need to be looking at what is that tax going to be on our water usage, you know, down the road in 10 years, if Lake Mead continues to, to drain, which every indication points to it is, you know, where are we going to be in 10 years with these new additions? So, I think that's something that we need to be looking at as a city on our side, so that everybody, you know, before, you know, major investment is going in and everything, you know, really trying to secure where are we going to be, you know, with our water coming up here in the near future. Those are really all my, my questions and comments for this particular one. As has been stated, this is obviously the beginning of the process. I think we'll have to go back and revisit a lot of these questions that were asked. But I appreciate all the effort that you have been putting into making sure that you're working with the community to, to see this through. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of items that, you know, came to me as I was going through this. One was when this was first discussed, there would be, there was talk of, well, we'll put in some renewable energy source here, so that the impact on the community would be lessened. Within the minutes that have been included from both the Parks and Rec Commission and Planning Commission, it now appears that there is no emphasis on that. And there's comments in there that, well, this would not require us to go and purchase additional, more expensive power elsewhere. That, that's just not the case. We exceed the amount of hydropower we already get from Hoover Dam, especially at times of year like this, and we have to go and buy it. So, anyone using any hydropower here is causing us to go and purchase power at a more expensive price outside. So, that's a comment in here. When I see something like that, it just doesn't make sense. And it doesn't appear, at least from the answers that were given to the other commissions, that there's an emphasis on doing any type of renewable energy for this. So, that's concerning to me, that this would end up costing our ratepayers additional money during the year. Another concern that I have is the talk about the lease terms that apparently have either already been discussed or something. But a lease term of 120 years is, is not something that I see as desirable at all. So, there's talk in here about a 30-year lease, and then three 30-year renewal periods after that. We're no longer talking about a lease. We're talking about a sale, a commitment of land. So, I have a problem with that. If the business model that you're already estimating for this indicates that you are not able to get your investment back without a 120-year lease on this land, that's not something that I find favorable about this proposal at all. We've seen problems already with leases that are long-term, and people get very used to the terms of those leases and want them to go on forever. Things change, 20 years, 30 years, things change over that period of time. And committing any type of land, any type of business arrangement between the city and anyone else for that period of time is not desirable, in my view. With regard to the water allocation, well, clearly, the golf courses are two of our largest water users here in Boulder City. But as I had mentioned in an earlier item we discussed earlier this evening, we're at a point now where it's no kidding anymore. I mean, it's been no kidding for a long time. But once again, what we're seeing with levels at Lake Mead are an accelerating drop that even the engineers who run the river had not anticipated. You know, is this going to break the back of Southern Nevada? Probably not. But I don't see a commitment from the project for either renewable energy or how water use may be mitigated. But my biggest concern is also involving this, intertwining this project with another city recreational facility. I know that there are projects where you can get some symbiosis out of combining things. But this project is injecting itself into an existing golf course in such a way that really limits any type of projects that may be necessary in the future, any type of work on the course. It is simply taking over a city asset, which I understand. I mean, who wouldn't want to have a golf course right in front of their recreational vehicle project, courtesy of the taxpayers of Boulder City? But the way this is designed, it's far too constrictive on the golf course, the operation of the golf course. It's clear that members of the Parks and Rec Commission and the Planning Commission had concerns about that. I have serious concerns of putting a project like this in the situation, in the position, around the existing golf course. When this project was first talked about, it would run along Boulder City Parkway from Veterans Parkway almost to Railroad Pass. Again, I had made it clear at that point, I found that an inappropriate place for a development like this. Then there was talk about putting it in another area at the corner of Buchanan and Adams. But then, when it came back, it's now involving a substantial city asset. And I just, I don't think that's wise of us at all. Any other questions or comments regarding this particular parcel?
Can I make a comment? Sure. The first item we had was on solar, renewable, renewable energy on this. And that's something we're pursuing right now. We have talked to, to solar energy providers in the preceding weeks, in the last two weeks, about making this a self-sustaining, self-sustainable facility from a power situation. Additionally, we are very early in the process, in the scheme of things of the development of this. And that is just one of the items that we can only go so far down the road as developers before we have to start making sure that we're acting as prudent businessmen and not getting over the tips of our skis, getting ahead of ourselves.
And, and the reason I made my comment is based on what I saw from the minutes of the earlier meetings, that, you know, I understand that you can't make a commitment on this, but it seemed that there was no commitment to it, that that was off the table. That was based on, on the minutes of these earlier meetings.
Okay. The second point you had on the lease term of 120 years, that was a, that was not on the table. That was, it was 30 plus 30 plus 30, so it was a total of 90. And that's just one thing that was discussed in one meeting. So, that's where that came from, so.
Once again, I'm just going on what it says, where it talks about a 30 plus three 30-year renewals, which, when I did the math, that was 120. But whether it's 120 or 90, that, that's not the type of commitment, I think, that should be made on a project of this nature.
Okay, I understand. On the, the water use mitigation, we would absolutely encourage that conversation, because we're in the same boat as well. We want to make sure that this uses as little water as possible. And we're very sensitive of the fact that we know what the lake's doing right now and want to act as prudently as possible to make sure that the project goes smoothly, but also be good, be good citizens of Boulder City and of the West right now. There's issues everywhere. And you're right, some serious answers are going to need to be determined on a large scale. And we're, we're one of those. We're in that, we're in that bucket. And we're, we're one of those. We're in that, we're in that bucket. And finally, on the, the public use and the taxpayer, as a taxpayer expense, our goal there is to drive revenues to the golf course, is to actually help the community so that there are more rounds, there are more greens fees, there are more weddings booked, there are more events booked, there are more tours booked, there are more people coming out from Arizona for the weekend with their college buddies that want to play and stay in Boulder City. So we view it from the other side. We view it as a financial boon to the city. Anything we can do to add to the tax base, we'd be happy to do. And we'd be paying a hefty room tax for the ability to do that, and happily.
And again, my concern is, I think there is land available in this area that might be considered. The way this project is being presented and the land that's being requested to be placed on the land management process, I do not believe is in the interest of the residents of Boulder City to have it so tightly tied in with an existing city recreation facility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding this parcel? Appreciate your information. Questions or comments regarding the other parcel, which is the 16 acres being proposed for sale, with the restriction that would be used primarily as a grocery store? Councilmember Fox?
So my concern is the grocery store. I think the desired grocery store that we would all want, right? It'd be Smiths or Trader Joe's. I don't see that coming to town just because, you know, it's a, it's a small town and bringing in a store like that would be pretty hard. I, I don't want to get stuck with like a Dollar Tree or Dollar General, you know, right there? Because I know they do sell some groceries, so would, I don't know if they're listed under grocery store or they're retail, but I know they do sell some, some groceries. So is there any stipulations in that to where it has to be a certain size store or certain kind of store, you know, rather than just a store that sells some groceries but mainly retail?
I think by definition, for a grocery store, over 50% of the sales would have to be a grocery store. That's for the ballot question. For any negotiations for the sale of the land, the city council can put in great detail with the RFP process exactly what you're looking for. And if the respondents don't meet those criteria, you don't entertain the sale of the land.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I mean, I, I have expressed my concerns before about the 16 acres. You know, just the, the potential for what, what, you know, what could go right versus what could go wrong. I, I think the, the most difficult thing, obviously, being is the amount of time that might pass before we actually see anything, you know, coming to fruition and just making sure that, you know, residents are aware and that they are, you know, being involved in that. You know, that being said, obviously, if this is, I think it's still an appropriate question to ask of our community, whether or not this is appropriate or not. I think that's where we should be going for those types of questions. And I think they'll, they'll be pretty, pretty clear about what they think, hopefully. But at the end of the, at the end of the day, you know, if we are considering it, then I think it does belong on the land management process. I think that's, you know, so unless we are considering removing it from the ballot, you know, we want to be sure that we are being consistent, that we are letting the public know that this is a consideration of the city and that, you know, that way there, there doesn't continue to be kind of this misrepresentation of, is it being considered? Is it not being considered? I thought this was on the ballot. I hear there's already been an, you know, they hear that the Planning Commission approves of something, you know? And so there's a lot of, of misunderstandings. So I, I just think we need to be consistent for the sake of the voter to make sure that they are aware. I'm sure, you know, when, you know, should this move forward to be placed on the land management process, there will probably be the thought that, oh, this means it's already going forward, of course. You know, so I, I think the most important thing here is just making sure that we are being very clear with the community about what this process really is. And I think this might serve as a great opportunity to further educate the public about this process so that they can, you know, be more informed and provide more input during, when, when we are considering these types of items. So those are really my, my comments about this one.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
I'm the same. I, I was reading this email. And what, what I heard, what I read here is somebody who thinks because of the discussion so far and the approval or by Planning Commission or by Parks and Rec Department that this is now going ahead. And, and I think that means that there are people out there who don't understand what the steps are to get to a point where we would actually be approving the change in use, the, the sale of the land, the, the whole process. And that no, that by putting it on the land management process list is simply a step towards what, what happens if it passes or does not pass. I remember the issue of the HOV, the off-highway vehicles, you know, and that we had a ballot question, should they be allowed? And people came out very loudly and put up signs and, you know, took, had petitions and, and communicated their dissatisfaction or satisfaction with the idea, and that it failed. So, well, it failed as a discussion item for council. It didn't, if it had passed, it would have been a discussion item for council. But this, but this is just part of a process. By, by agreeing to put it on the list does not mean that we agree that we're going to sell it. I have concerns. I, I think that we've had a tough time finding grocery stores. They, they didn't rush into town when, when they closed the, the bonds. I know there was a discussion of having something over on, by Albertson's across the road and that, I, I don't know if it exists, but I think that this is an opportunity to say, well, put it on this list, and that means it can go forward and be voted on by the people in Boulder City. So, but I think, I agree with Councilman Adams that I, I think the education process is really important for people to understand how this system works. And that by us voting tonight, one way or the other, that it's not going to show up on Nextdoor tomorrow that they approved a grocery store, which it may. So that, that's mine.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen? You know, this is probably the, certainly within the top three most asked questions for the longest period of time that I've been either a member of the city council or mayor. When are we going to get a second grocery store? I know, Mr. Mays, you've worked on this extensively. Our economic development coordinator, Mr. Fishtechen, has also done that. There have been some nibbles, but no one saw a place where a grocery store might be successful here in Boulder City. Councilmember Bridges had mentioned that one piece of land across from Albertson's. I think that's gone through about seven or eight different proposals, and none have come about for that land. It's still vacant. The, many people bring up, well, what about the old bonds? Well, from what I understand, whoever owns it isn't about to let that become a grocery store that would compete against the existing Albertson's. So we can't force anybody to sell their land or convert its use. Well, actually, I won't get into that, but we don't do that easily or readily. So we have to start looking, okay, where, where can we go? Well, this particular piece of land is closest within the existing footprint of the city as possible. It's also a piece of land that, yep, it would put it right next to development there at the Gingerwood Mobile Home Park. But, you know, any type of development that's going to occur is best put next to something that already exists. If we put wide spaces in between, that's leapfrog development. It's expensive, it's wasteful, it's all of those things. I think we've made it very clear that this would only be for a grocery store. I've seen magic wands get waved by councils in the past that changed things. I would hope that wouldn't happen with this. And I think that the ballot question is going to be worded in such a way that makes that clear. And as Councilmember Adams has brought up, you know, we're asking the community. We have to ask them, and rightly so, anytime we sell more than an acre of land. And we're being very specific about what the land use would be. I think it's best if we do listen to the residents. They've spoken many times about the desire for this. So I, I think that we need to put this forward and let the voters decide in, in November as whether they want this to go through or not. And it will be up to the voters to make that decision. Anyone else? Okay, you know, I, I know there was some confusion with some of the planning commission members. We have one resolution in front of us. Is that correct, Mr. Mays? 7470, which would apply to neither, either, or both of these parcels. Is that correct?
As currently written, it would include both, but the council can modify that as you see fit.
Okay. In order to avoid confusion and, and try and come to agreement as much as possible, I think the best way to do this is get an indication from each council member as to whether they favor a particular parcel going forward on the land management process. And then we can determine how the resolution might go forward if there is any agreement on that. So who would be in agreement with forwarding the item? Is it 03, 2203?
Land Management Process Number 2203 is Elite RV, and 2204 is the grocery store site.
Okay. Is there question or concerns from?
It'd be best just to have a motion on the resolution.
I, I don't think that would be unless there's something that's prohibited here. Because again, I saw this occur with the Planning Commission, where some members may have favored one item and some others. And that wound up being members feeling that the only way they could have a voice in it was to vote no on the resolution. I don't believe that a discussion of the council, as far as who might be in favor of a particular item, is prohibited, is it?
You can discuss as long as you're not voting on each item.
Okay, well, we won't be voting, but the indication seems to be that I have a concern with the first parcel. Anyone else who may have similar concerns on 2203, which is the RV park proposal?
I'll say I do share some of your concerns, but I am comfortable at this time with at least moving forward to try and answer some of those.
Okay, and same discussion on 2204, which is the sale of the 16 acres dedicated as a grocery retail development. Again, I, I believe that this is something that the voters should be making a decision on. Any other concerns from council members regarding that? Okay, then I think we all understand each other's thoughts on this. Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7470?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution Number 7470.
All seconded up?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. So we have four in favor and myself opposed to the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Mays. Appreciate all the work on this. And I did not hear you say plan, so. Success once again. All right, we'll move on to item number 10. Nine has been removed for possible action matters pertaining to the vacation of easements. Mr. Teder?
Mr. Mays will be handling this as well.
Thank you.
So state law says that whenever a municipality is considering the vacation of an easement, it requires a public hearing before the city council and consideration of resolution. Before you is Resolution 7472. And this is related to a 10-foot utility easement that bisects two properties, 1115 and 1117 Caperna Court. In this situation, it is the same property owner that owns both parcels. So the no more requirements for having this typical type of 10-foot utility easement to provide for utilities that might serve both properties is not needed. This has been reviewed by all departments related to utilities within the city. And there are no existing utilities, and city staff does not see a need for this easement and is supportive of its vacation. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding this item? This is a type of item we have run into before. Again, these are two adjoining properties that the owner is asking to have that easement removed so they can build what they would like to on that. I think, Mr. Mays, when we discussed it yesterday, it turns, I believe it's two-quarter acre lots into approximately one-half acre lot in that location. Anyone wishing to make a motion on, oh, excuse me, we have a public hearing. I will open the public hearing then regarding the vacation of these easements. Is there anyone in council chambers who would like to speak to this item? Again, this is the removal or vacation of easements at adjoining properties at 115 and 117 Caperna Court. All right, if there's no one in chambers, we will make the phone line available. The phone number, 702-589-9629. This is a public hearing for the vacation of easements at 115 and 117 Caperna Court. Anyone wishing to call in? The phone number, 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any written comments received for this item?
No comments were received.
Thank you. Last opportunity. Anyone in council chambers who would like to speak during this public hearing? All right, hearing no one, we will close the public hearing and move any questions or comments from council members regarding the item? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7472?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution Number seventy-four seventy-two.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Item Number eleven, Resolution seventy-four seventy-three. Madam City Attorney?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Resolution seventy-four seventy-three is a resolution approving the execution of Amendment Two to the One Nevada Agreement on Allocation of Opioid Recoveries Regarding the Distribution of Attorney Fees to the One Nevada Agreement. As you know, we are a party to the One Nevada Agreement on opioid recoveries. This agreement allows the state of Nevada to negotiate with opioid distributors and manufacturers on our behalf that are, that we are currently litigating with for the cause of the opioid epidemic that has impacted our state. We approved Amendment One, which limited the attorney fees for the settlements that we are currently entering into with two of the opioid distributors. This amendment just clarifies that the state essentially can collect the monies for us and remit them to the jurisdictions.
Any questions or comments regarding this agreement? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. And at this time, there's no guidelines currently as to how these funds might be spent once they were made.
No, we are getting a distribution soon, and we will also be receiving guidelines. Once we get the settlement distribution and receive those guidelines, we'll bring it back to council to determine how it should be spent. It's going to be approximately a little over forty thousand dollars this fiscal year, and then give or take ten thousand each fiscal year for the next eighteen years.
Thank you. And I'll just say this, not to go too far off the topic at hand, but, you know, we do have a problem here in Boulder City, and we actually held a, an outreach meeting just real recently regarding substance use in our community and what some of the potential harm reduction options may be available, which hopefully funding like this could help to promote. So I think this is an important, important thing, obviously, that we need to address, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution seventy-four seventy-three?
I would like to move to approve of Resolution Number seventy-four seventy-three.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that vote is also unanimous for approval. Item twelve, City Manager Report. Mr. Tetter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight's City Manager's Report features the Claims Paid and Financial Report for May of twenty-two. There's nothing unusual this evening to note, but I stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the City Manager Report? Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to our final public comment period. Public comment during this period may be on any issue. Again, speakers have up to five minutes to speak, and as always, we ask you be civil and concise. Anyone in chambers who would like to speak? Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening, Mayor McManus and Councilmen. I'm Karen Wilkes. I'm from Saint Christopher's. I'm from Saint Christopher's Episcopal Church, next door, and...
And I'm Mike Weatherford, a member of Saint Andrew Catholic Community. We are here tonight on behalf of the Boulder City Cluster of Nevadans for the Common Good, and we're here to actually talk about the Boulder City share of the American Rescue Plan, or ARPA Fund, which we understands on the agenda for next time on July twelfth. Little bit of background about us. Nevadans for the Common Good is a broad-based nonprofit organization that brings forty-plus diverse organizations together to build relationships, find common grounds on issues, and act in nonpartisan ways to improve life for Nevadans. Our Boulder City Cluster here in town has member institutions. They are Boulder City United Methodist Church, Saint Andrew Catholic Community, and Saint Christopher's Episcopal Church. The focus of our local cluster here is to act in nonpartisan ways to improve life for the residents of Boulder City. Several local organizations have partnered with us over the years on specific actions, such as expanding funding for the Meals on Wheels program. In early 2021, during the pandemic, our cluster decided to engage with the Boulder City community to hear what people were dealing with and what they identified as community needs. Since then, we've had one-on-one conversations and small group meetings through Zoom initially, talking with residents, members of our institutions, school personnel, business owners, local nonprofit service providers, and community and city leaders. We learned a lot about the services our nonprofits and city entities provide for citizens every day. We also learned that many of the people these entities serve have longer-term health issues, both mental and physical, and social service needs beyond what these entities can provide. For example, eighty percent of emergency responses by the Boulder City Fire Department are health-related, and ten percent of those require long-term solutions to the situation that prompted the call. The fire department has limited capacity to provide assistance beyond the emergency response. The police department's in a similar situation. Our community-based service providers, such as Lende Hand and Emergency Aid, are primarily staffed by volunteers, and they do a great job of meeting clients' immediate needs, but they also lack the capacity to provide ongoing, longer-term support for their clients.
As a community, we need a community-focused, trained service provider that can identify residents' additional care needs and coordinate access to the necessary services, which for many individuals is a complicated process. The goal is to move from managing emergencies to finding solutions that help people become stronger with reduced need for emergency management. This builds more resilient families, is cost-effective for the entities providing the emergency services, and builds a stronger and more resilient community. Over the last eight months, the Boulder City Cluster and community partners, which are Emergency Aid, Lende Hand, Boulder City Fire Department, Martha P. King Elementary Principal and Counselor, Boulder City Chamber of Commerce, Senior Center, and Boulder City Hospital, have been meeting together monthly and periodically with Mayor McManus and City Manager Tetter to develop a strategy by which this position can be initiated and funded. We appreciate the research and assistance that the mayor and city manager have given to our effort to make this program a reality. We're excited that startup funding for this position is in the ARPA Funding Plan being presented to the council in early July. The goal is to start the program in January two thousand twenty-three, which will include providing assessment and service coordination to Boulder City residents, developing a database on services requested and delivered, and seeking long-term funding for sustainability. The Boulder City Cluster of Nevadans for the Common Good and community partners urge that the council to approve the ARPA Budget Plan, including this position, which will benefit many Boulder City residents and families, in fact, the entire community. We thank you for listening to us tonight, and we're looking forward to seeing you again in a couple weeks.
Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? All right, we will take anyone wishing to call in at this time then. The phone number, seven-zero-two-five-eight-nine-nine-six-two-nine. Anyone wishing to call in for the final public comment period? Madam City Clerk, were there any written comments for the final public comment period?
No comments were received.
Thank you. Last opportunity. Anyone present would like to speak? All right, we will close the final public comment period, and our last item, City Council Reports. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I just want to encourage people who are dealing with some sort of emergency in their life in terms of assistance with rent or utilities or food. There's no reason not to contact Emergency Aid. We do have resources available to assist people going through a tough time. So you make an appointment, you show up, and hopefully get the assistance that you need. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Just a reminder that this is Fourth of July weekend, and Boulder City is a wonderful place to be on the Fourth of July. There's a lot of activities planned and a lot of time and energy went into it, so come out and help celebrate with us.
Thank you. Councilmember Fox? Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned earlier, just a little over a week ago, Southern Nevada Health District held a community outreach meeting on substance use in our community. It was a very productive meeting. I think there was a lot of good conversation discussing some of the issues that we are dealing with here in town, and so I just wanted to thank staff for all of their support and helping to make that meeting possible. And also, big, big thanks to Southern Nevada Health District for, you know, putting a lot of effort here into Boulder City and working to try and bridge some of that gap in services that we have been experiencing. So I wanted to make that a point. Also, with regards to Southern Nevada Health District, we have been seeing an increase in transmission. I'm wearing my mask right now to provide a sense of, well, I don't know if it provides a sense of safety for those around me, but, you know, I was away over the weekend and likely exposed. No, I'm sorry. No offense.
Making us all feel really good, so...
Yeah. Anyways, my point is that we can all, we can all take, you know, make, take that extra step to, you know, to ensure if we have likely been exposed or not, you know, you can, you can test, you know, remember to still test if you feel you have symptoms or if you've been exposed and to wear your mask, keep your distance when you think that's appropriate. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. As Councilmember Jorgensen had mentioned, it is Fourth of July coming up on Monday. You know, Danbury has always been one of the fondest memories I have of growing up here in Boulder City. But of course, as Councilmember Adams just frightened us again, and rightfully so. You know, last year, Fourth of July, following Fourth of July, we saw one of those great big spikes in COVID infections. So if you're sick, why don't you stay home and not scare the rest of us? But otherwise, let's have a great time on the Fourth of July. Be safe out there, be smart. But again, it's Fourth of July in Boulder City, best time of the year. Thank you to all the staff for your contributions to the meeting today, and we are adjourned.